His own, the dry race board was something we had suggested. He has golf carts now that take people back and forth. He has signage up at the Cow Palace. I'm letting other people around the state know about this. He has additional wheelchairs, actually a wheelchair express lane. He expanded the area, the ADA area. I don't think we mentioned a low stimulus area that he also has. An emotional support area and actually a language link. So kudos to him for doing that. And again, I'm sharing it with people around the state. Unfortunately, there were a few counties, I think, that weren't quite as up to par as we were. And there, you probably saw that there was a lawsuit filed through a new group that's been formed with Cheryl Grossman from the Image Center and the Maryland Disability Law Center. But I think the outcome of that was fairly good. And that I think all the other counties have certified that they've come up to date with what they should be providing for people with disabilities as they visit their COVID sites. Just real quick, a lot of people have been asking about the appointment commission, appointment process. Jay's done a great job keeping in touch with the executive office. With everything else going on, that's going to be not at the top of the list, which is, which is, it makes sense. But just have patience, it's going to be continuing at some point. And I'm sure everybody's wondering about the NCAA playoffs. We didn't get to do our, we didn't get to do our contest last year. Larry Hughes, were you one of our winners? I think like.
Hey, you owe me lunch by now, there's dinner and a sleepover.
I did, whoa.
Hey, Larry, you have to wear your mask.
Two, two Marilyn T's.
That's right, that's, that's awesome. Anyhow, in the past, I was calling De Madoca and Julie Gainer. I did take out to dinner, I do owe Larry. So today or tonight or somehow, I'm going to try to copy a grid and send it out. So the people can, I don't know how to do it. People can either email it back to me or send it in the mail if they have to. I'll, I'll, I'll send my address later. That's one of the more fun things we do, do. So happy St. Patrick's Day. And I'm going to turn it over to Jay and Ben for now to, well, the next, let's, next part of the meeting.
Can I chime in real quick? Excuse me.
Yes.
Terry, I just want to say thank you for sharing that NPR article about the challenges everyone's facing with the vaccine. I shared that with a lot of folk. It was super helpful and bringing up more conversations about it. So thank you.
It, I, as most of us are, we're on a lot of different committees and we're torn this way and that way. But at a time like this, it's really nice to share information like that. I mean, Bonham County, I think, is a role model for what Terry Stepp does. That's why I mentioned everything. And there is a meeting every Wednesday evening through Cheryl Grossman. She's now employed at the, at the Image Center. And they run concerns, they take in concerns about everything that's happened. That's where the lawsuit was filed and that was where all the articles came out. And they're doing a great job, they really are. One of the bigger issues that is harder to resolve is people with disabilities who live at home and aren't receiving services. But again, I think that they're doing a good job bringing it to the attention of people that are, are running the clinics around the state. So thank you for that. Okay.
All right, so I, I think Jay had sent out a, an ask about a week or so ago for the providers of service to really let us know where you are, what problems you've had. And going forward, how you perhaps going to operate. Some of you still aren't in full operation as far as bringing people back into your facilities. So I've got a list here and maybe we can start with David.
Sure. Hello, everybody. So I come into work about once a week or so. This is a busy week, I'll be here more often. But I've been working remotely. Most of all of our programs shut down for the first, you know, few weeks after March 13th. After March 13th. And we immediately started doing virtual programming in all of the programs. But it's hard to say where we could, it's been like a year's worth of stuff. So let me start with League Industries, our social enterprise. There's a lot of printing, courier service. That's a print shop, which is considered an essential business. Larry, can you mute?
Sure, yes.
That would be great, thank you. All right, great. So, and as that business, they've continued to work. So it's about 15, 20 people that have been coming in. Except, I think they closed one, one and a half days because of the recent snowstorm. But other than that, they've been working and making a bunch of money, well, through state contracts. And this is, you know, I think they're up to about 52% of the people who work there have disabilities and the others don't have disabilities. And they throw off a bunch of profit to help with programs that, that aren't making money. The, the, probably the first thing that opened up was our gym and our pool. Cause, cause gyms were allowed to open at low capacity in, you know, going back to, I think it was June that was announced. I think we opened it late June. And that's, that, we just changed the, the hours. It used to be six, six days a week. Now it's just Monday through Fridays from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We used to stay open until nine, but we don't. It's not heavily utilized, the gym, but the pool is. And we've got limitations, only six people can be in the pool at a time. This is half Olympic size. We are not doing any group classes and that we used to do, the line dancing, aqua aerobics, aqua arthritis, all that stuff, can't do that. So it's just open for, for free swimming. And Good Sam's been coming over and doing their aquatic physical therapy, hydrotherapy programs. They rent the pool to do that. And interestingly, they started, they're the first group to start that, they wear masks in the pool. Cause they're just, you know, they're exercising, they're not swimming, their head's not under the water generally. But, but their masks get wet, but, but they're talking and they're working and they're stretching. So now we've put that in place for our, our people. I always say the little ladies go in the pool, but they're my age. So they're, they're, they're little young ladies and a few guys. But a lot of them with arthritis, they're just walking around in the pool. So we make them wear a mask. But people who are swimming, doing laps will, will wear a mask. Or will not be required to wear a mask. All right. So I talked about that. We did, we've, we've begun, I don't know, four, four or five months ago, having limited day had groups that go into the community. They've been going much, you know, much smaller. Used to take groups of like eight to 10 people out. Now they're like three people at the most. And that's continuing to go and more and more small groups are going. And then Club 1111, we, 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 we closed down for, we closed March, which was just March 11th, I think, was the date in, in 2020. As everything was going on, it didn't have to close then, the guidance hadn't gone in. But we did it out of an abundance of caution, not knowing that was going to be, you know, February was the last club we did in person with like 600 people. So I think starting in April, it could have been May that we started doing virtual club. It's, you know, a dance party. So we used to get about 600 people to Club 1111 here on second Saturday every month. Now we're getting only about 100 to 110 people online, but we continue to do it 6 to 8 p.m. And it's a fun thing. If you ever want to check it out, club1111.org, there's a, a, a link to get there. And I don't anticipate us opening club back up until probably 2022. January or so is my goal, but who knows, this is all crap shoot. But 600 people together in one building, I, I just don't see that happening. But boy, I miss it. Okay. Lessons learned, that remote works really well for some people. It's worked better than, than in person. You don't have all the distractions and especially people with aphasia and they're working with someone with a, like speech language pathologist. That, that part has worked tremendously well. And we will likely continue to offer that. Had a conversation the other day with somebody who sells robots for, for, for people to call in and then they can control the robot and be part of a group. So I'm very curious to see $2,700 a robot. If it looks enticing, I may go after a grant to see how this works. Cause then you can integrate people who are at home or somebody in medical day who's got a infection and can't come in. Wouldn't it be great for them to be able to be with their loved ones? It's made for nursing homes, for families to visit with their loved one without having to go into the nursing home. So that'll be interesting. And other lessons learned, that it's really hard to build esprit de corps in this remote environment. You know, it's just, it's just so, you know, we can kind of see each other and kind of get it there. But it isn't the same as being over there at this STEM bridge and having lunch and having little side conversations. It's just not the same for us or for the people we serve. And then benefits of remote working. Yes, we were able to, we shut down our scale location. It was, it was losing money anyway, at $100,000, you know, a year expense. So I used, none of this can be repeated. This is all a cone of silence here. So I used the excuse of COVID saying, we can't continue to pay for this rent for this thing if we can't do the service. So they let us out of a five-year lease. Maybe I had like two more years of it. We just negotiated and I gave them some of the PPP money where you got reimbursed for, for rent anyway. And it got out of that, out of position. So I saved $200,000 in that one program. And, and that was a benefit of this whole thing happening. And I think a lot of the businesses that, that closed, they were businesses that weren't doing real well to start with. So, so it's a good, good time to look at our programs. All right. And then about negative impacts, it's just that lack of human touch. Besides the esprit de corps, just the, the human touch is just, you know, even if it's going to be a fist bump or an elbow, it's, there's something to that. It's just not the same doing it, doing it this way. And then we've got a bunch, as my colleagues, I'm sure, will say, a bunch of people who can engage online. They just, they don't have enough support from their families to do it. Or they just can't focus enough to do it. And I feel bad for them. The ones who can, boy, they love it. I have people who are online for like four hours in, in every possible class that we do. Cause they, they need this, they got nothing else going on in their lives. We're all stuck at home. And then the, the outstanding needs to be recognized, just, just that our staff and especially you guys who do residential, kudos to those DSPs, direct service professionals, support professionals who, who have worked through this whole thing. And they're working with people with COVID, they're working, they're, they're worried about bringing it home. You know, we've got a few people going to, into some homes, but we haven't anywhere near what, what my colleagues with the residential have done. So, so this should be the year of the DSP, so we should congratulate them. All right, I'll shut up. Larry might have a question. But he's muted now, so we shouldn't tell him. Leave him muted.
No. And Jay, Jay Greenberg, I got something special for you. What you said is so vital and I hope everybody was listening. And just before I discuss what it is, my background is being the oldest member of the Physical Fitness Commission of the state of Maryland, which was the oldest commission in the United States. Fitness is very important. I understand you cut down a lot of the programs and I know club was really hitting because it got a lot of people out there, although I didn't personally come, but I interacted with a lot of people that did come. This is the point I'm trying to make. Because of my computer collecting with data, you got a lot of data that I don't think you're using as best as you could. Number one, because you shut down activities, notice I said activities, where people were coming and getting that from you. And just like the virtual that we doing, that's a learned experience. That ain't never going away. So you need to step up programs to do that. So if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind coming over and looking at your data to find out what categories people who are members of you fit into to create activities to keep them active until we can come back face to face. Because you've got to stay active to beat COVID. I know, because of all the things I've been through, I got, I got my stuff way back in January because of the status of my health. And I know how important activity is for us all. Anybody, if you don't do nothing but pick up your toothbrush five times a day and wave it in your hand, you gotta do something to keep the heart beating and everything else. Please, Dave, offer myself to you.
Larry, yeah, thank you. Good point. But we do, we have activity, online activities, but it's not the same thing as have, I have an aerobics instructor who says, okay, and they'll do chair aerobics, they'll do, I think all of us are doing that. So we have those as one of the classes they can take. It's not just the, you know, activity for their brain, but we do have physical activity and it's very important. So, but I don't want to, I know there's a bunch of other people are going to speak, so I'm going to shut up. Thank you all.
I just wanted to say I saw you on Fox 45 in the club the other day. Good spot.
That was pre haircut.
I was.
Yes, it was.
People miss it. I hear people all the time, they miss it.
Ben, Ben, we can't hear you.
Ben is muted, but can I just pass it off? Pass it off to Kathleen.
Okay, so.
Kathy, one, one other thing. What, if you could perhaps also address what you've done with supported employment for your clients and the physical, the financial issues that your clients are facing if they've been out of work.
They, are you asked?
Yeah, so you're, you're, you're on.
Oh, okay, okay. So a lot of what I'll say is probably mirrors what David said. But we, so when this first started, we, you know, stopped all the day programming and those kinds of services. But our, our residential went 24/7, much like many of my colleagues. So we had 75 homes that we all of a sudden needed to staff 24/7. As well as, we have a foster care program, so kids were home, so foster parents, many of our foster. So we supported them.
Has left the meeting.
So, so that was one of the big, you know, changes for us is all of a sudden we had to staff people in their homes. And, you know, we have, we're, we support about 1,200 people. So, you know, it was a major operation. Many of the people that would have worked in our day centers were willing to work in community living homes, but many did not, many did not come back. We also had to continue with some of our contracts. So we do contract work, we do landscape editorial. And so we had many, many workers, we did not have come in because of medical issues or whatever. Some we have been bringing back little by little. So we probably have maybe 100 workers back still on the job. And we've been fulfilling, you know, filling the contracts as we go and, and that's been quite the challenge. But, and then like David said, we went remote for all our day services. So we do probably 50 different classes and, and they range. So Larry, like, like David said, we have aerobic classes, we have all sorts of physical activity kind of classes. We have sign language, we have Spanish, we have cooking and all sorts of experiential classes. And, and that's been one of the, I think, for us, the lesson learned is people, you know, there are folks that does not work for, but there are folks that love it. And it's have really engaged with it. And, and we've learned that they then use that to connect, you know, when they're not with us, they're, they're on Facebook or Instagram or they're talking to their friends or, so it's been really good. And we've had to work through a lot of access issues. So not everybody had technology, so we got a lot of grants and we had to get, and even our staff. When our staff shut down, we had to make sure people had computers at home and they could do remote work. They could teach remote class from their home. And so we had to do a lot of deploying our resources in that way, which is, you know, will be a benefit us moving forward, obviously. We had, our, our business services in terms of support employment went on fire. We've gotten so many people jobs surprisingly. Or maybe not surprisingly, I don't know. But so, you know, I couldn't be prouder of our support employment team, our business service team. Got lots of people jobs in all different settings. So the people that we support are also essential workers, nursing homes and dying and other places. So, so that we were really pleasantly surprised. And like David kind of did, we did use the opportunity, so to speak, to close. We had already closed one of our centers in, I think, January. And we used this opportunity to close another one and not open, not reopen. Since we knew we weren't going to use that property, we, you know, were able to get out of our lease, just like David did. So since that is kind of where the state is moving anyway, and we had already done a strategic plan to, to map out we were heading that way. We were kind of able to do that. You know, I guess for us, the lessons that we've learned, we've had to really rework how we do everything. And I, you know, my team has been phenomenal. We have had a number of outbreaks, a significant number. We've probably over, over 100 people have had it, have had COVID in our, either our staff or people that we support. We've lost many people. We've had people that have died for other reasons. So the, the just process of brief supporting the people that live with them, having funerals that were virtual, all those kinds of things just have really taken a toll on our staff and our staff have stepped up. So like David said, the, you know, the biggest message is essential workers, boy, our staff have been remarkable. And, and they are, they're working, you know, they're working with people that are COVID positive. And, you know, so it's just been a constant flow for HR reporting it to, you know, obviously all the OSHA and CDC and the state and DDA and all that kind of stuff has just kept us kind of moving. But as I think we looked reopen, we're still, honestly, we're still in vaccination mode because we're, you know, we're hosting a number of clinics. So we're having our next, our eighth clinic tomorrow and we have another one Saturday. So we've, by the end of all of our clinics will have gotten, I think, 1,500. So we're really proud of that. It's been a major effort. We've had a number of outbreaks from our clinics. I wish I was quarantined for two weeks. So, so we've got to be, you know, moving on our feet with some of that. But, but I think it's, it's driven home. The, you know, when we talk about our DSP, we don't think of them in medical model terms because that's not the definition of what we want them to be doing. They're drug support professionals, they're supposed to help people make connections. And all of a sudden it was, you're a medical person, you have to wear PPE. And, you know, we've watched some of our shining stars in terms of Carol Beatty and the secretary of facilities and, and really advocate for the recognition this group of people should have had all along. But they had to change from really helping people find, you know, meet community members and develop skills in the community and connect to people and all that, to all of a sudden really looking at COVID in a whole new way and looking at how to support people in their homes and staying home and learning how to wear masks and all that kind of stuff. And, and they just stepped up. But what we're also seeing is it's a crisis beyond, beyond this because we are very short staff. So we have had to use temps, we've had to, you know, many of our staff, it's not a living wage. We say it all the time and, and nothing like a public health crisis to highlight it. But many staff work for more than one agency. And so in terms of COVID, the spread, so we've had, you know, we have a, David and I are on a Baltimore City partnership now where some Baltimore City providers get together and, and we've had to learn to really work together because staff come in, they're positive, they work for two agencies, they can't afford to not have that. And, you know, some of them aren't telling us when they have it. And so it's just highlighted what people have to do to, you know, feed their families. And, and the threat that they have faced. And then they bring it to the next place that they work. And if they made a decent wage, they would only have to have one job like you and I have. So I think that's, that's the kind of next crisis moving forward. So we had a lot of staff that when we reopen, whatever that looks like, and we're developing that and we're having conversations with families and certainly the most prominently with the people we support and saying, what's worked for you? What hasn't worked? We expand on and certainly jobs is our focus. But there will be some folks that we're going to still do activities and small groups though. And so we're going to need more staff than we've ever needed at a time when everyone is fighting for the same person and making, you know, 13 bucks an hour when you could go to Amazon for 15 and stock at the shelf versus coming in and, you know, working with somebody who's COVID positive is, is, you know, always been our issue and it's highlighted all the more now. There's been lots of benefits. I think, again, the skills of the people that we support and being able to be remote has been remarkable. And the hybrid, I think, really is probably where a lot of this is going to go, where people will do some things remote, some things in person. It's definitely kept some staff that I think I would have lost, because a lot of our staff have young children who weren't in school and couldn't come in, but could certainly teach a remote class from home or, you know, or do whatever kind of work, check them in on people, that kind of stuff. So I think we retained a lot of our workforce because we were able to do remote stuff. And I think the, the negative is, as David said, just the human contact. But I do think it's different to sit and, and, you know, I, I take my class, now this again in the code of, you know, I take a, a class through my gym and sometimes I cheat and I'm not actually exercising and I'm out of the camera zone, you know, like, so it's just different than if you are really so, again, all that laughter. But seriously, like, it's just different to, you know, taking aerobics class online than it is when you're really at the gym. So we can't replace that. And I think we, we are seeing people are losing mobility skills, they're losing some of, you know, the cognitive skills and all that kind of stuff. So I think there will be a hybrid look to this, but certainly there are some losses to some of that. Access issues, like I said, you know, we, we work with a lot of folks in the city who don't have the resources to do some of this stuff and to do the remote. And so we've had to be real creative with getting that. And wifi, you know, we could get them a device, but the wifi and all that. But the biggest thing I think is really the DSP crisis. And I think, you know, I think people are tired hearing from us, but our field, the DD field is so underfunded for our direct support staff. So paying that $13 to do what they do is a disgrace. And that's, you know, that's hopefully changing, but it's still going to be one of the biggest issues is to professionalize our work.
And Manny. Has joined the meeting.
Okay, so I think I covered it all.
All right, thank you, Kathleen. Doug, for the chimes?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Very parallel things going on with chimes, as you guys have heard already. So a year ago, I always like to refer to Friday, the 13th, a year ago, we shut down all of our vocational programs. Our residential stayed open, we furloughed almost all of our residential staff. Our, you know, when I call our corporate offices, they've all been working remote and still work remote. My team and I are, have been in the office every day since day one, as, as have our residential staff. Very similar things, people working in homes that have a COVID outbreak. Staff refusing to work because there's a COVID outbreak or a risk, all those kinds of things we've, we've run into as well. So I, I received the employment department here for Chimes Maryland. And I had about 80 staff reporting to me last March, I now have four. We've been holding the fort down, doing everything from case management to job development to cleaning toilets, to be honest with you. Anything and everything that needs to be done. We also do virtual services as well. I think they've been, you know, they've been good in a lot of ways because it's, it's, it's provided a tool for the individuals to get together, see their friends and have a good time. And I think that's really good. On, on the flip side, there, there's a large population of, of individuals that don't have the support at home or the technology. And, you know, they're being completely underserved at the moment. You know, some of the benefits of working remote is, you know, we would have annual meetings that would last an hour and a half to three hours. You know, some of the benefits of working remote is, you know, we would have annual meetings that would last an hour and a half to three hours. And nowadays they run about 15 minutes to 30 minutes, which is great. They kind of burn and turn really quickly, most of them. Back in, back in March a year ago, we were operating a lot of what we would call group employment. We were working a lot of different universities and things like that. And all of that got completely shut down. And ultimately what that did was that meant about 100 people or so were left unemployed. One of the things going on in the DDA world is that type of service is frowned upon. They don't want providers to be the employer of record. And so we have decided to discontinue that service when we reopen. One of the things we're looking at is individuals won't have worked for Chimes for a year, year and a half or more. The service would be time limited and it just doesn't feel right to bring people back only to take that job away from them six months later. So everything we're focusing on going forward will be competitive employment, which means having their own job outside of the agency. A year ago, we had, I believe it was 88 people who were independently competitively employed. That quickly dropped to about 15 people in March, April. We have since worked with individuals and advocated for them and with things opening back up, plus the job development that we done, that we've done. We've gotten about 63 individuals back to work right now and a few others that I hope as these schools are reopening, they'll come back off of furlough and get their jobs too. Like Kathleen says, there, there is a lot of jobs out there right now. I want to say in the past 30 days, we've gotten 10 people employed, which I think is great. One of the trends that, that I'm seeing is that people don't want to work right now. They've got their stimulus checks, they got their unemployment, they got their $300 on top of that. And all those other things going on. There's a lot of disincentives to go out and risk getting a job working in a restaurant per se. And that's, it's kind of opening up the playing field that we can capitalize on that right now. And, and people that want to work, we can get them back to work. So when we reopen, I don't exactly know what that looks like. We're, we're hoping to reopen late spring, early summer. I'd imagine we're probably going to do it in stages. I can't see us flicking a switch and bringing everyone back. So we'll probably start doing a few groups at a time. We did, like the league and the ARC, we looked at one of our facilities that we were renting. And with not having anyone in that facility for a year, we decided that we needed to close that building as well. So we also got out of a lease. In a way, that's a good thing. Services are changing from what we would call facility based, where people come to a building, to becoming community based. Where all of your services take place in an individual's community. So what we're going to do, you know, COVID has its negatives, but it also has its blessings. And this kind of forces the hand to create a community based program. So instead of looking at a new physical space, we are outlining what a community based program will look like. Speaking with families and coordinators and getting people on board for this new type of program where everything will literally happen in the community and not in a facility. So that, that's a good thing. And I foresee that happening with all of our programs across the board at, at some time, because that's just the way things are going. You know, lessons learned. You know, we, we've lost a lot of staff, you know, by furloughing people, they either decided that they needed to go on somewhere else. I mean, you figure they haven't worked in a year. I don't know that I would sit on unemployment for a year. I'm a little too, too driven for that, if that makes sense. So people have moved on. People have refused to accept positions in our residential home, which means we let them go. Kind of curious what it'll look like when we do reopen us. We're going to have to do some massive rehiring, just because we, my roster is, is empty. It really is, which is a little scary. Because I, I know we all had recruiting problems prior to COVID and I can imagine we're all in the same boat. So we're all going to be recruiting at the same time for very similar positions and we'll see what that looks like. Outstanding needs to be recognized. Again, I, I agree with Kathleen, the DSPs. It's just, it's amazing. So, you know, I, I've seen the ebb and flow and played the psychiatrist here for my staff with all the emotions of the ups and downs that we've been through, through the year. And I don't necessarily see the residential, at least firsthand, but I can only imagine a lot of the emotions that people are going through, you know, you're, you're scared for your health, you're scared to lose your job. You're seeing things crumbling around you and you're holding on. And they really need a lot of credit for that. It's, you know, it, it's, it's tough to do. I, I don't even know that I could do it, you know, I'm, 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 yes, I've been in an office every day and I'm around my peers, but I'm not in a home per se. And, you know, to have to wear PPE all day long and you have your daily tasks as it is, but you also have this pandemic over top of you. And I, I really feel for them. They're very strong and yeah, we all need to figure out a way to give them more than a round of applause when it's all said and done.
That's really well said, Doug. I mean, that, that was the emotional part of all this that a lot of us don't see. And as, you know, people that run these provider agencies, you're seeing that. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Doug. We had 10 more. Greg, do you want to do 10 more?
I'd be happy to. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take much time because what Kathleen and what Doug and what David has said is, is mirrored, not just here, but I think with pretty much all the providers. So, you know, the idea of being as creative and innovative as you can with the, with the cards that we were dealt here is something that I'm hearing from all the providers as well. We all find ourselves with massive shortfalls with team members. And, you know, kind of, kind of, you know, there's, there's the one side where you don't feel that bad when you have to furlough 100 people because you know they're making more money sitting at home than they were making working. But now coming out of this, that, that, that competes against our ability to bring people back. And you've heard that from, from my colleagues who have shared as well. And so we find ourselves in that same situation. You know, I wish that, I wish that the government was a little bit more, more forward looking and instead of sending out $1,400, how about exempt the first 1,400 of your federal tax? Because then they would reward people that are actually still in the workforce or a combination of both, you know, and, and so we dealt with the same things everybody else, you know, dealt with. Families that had to leave, you know, team members here that had to go home because their kids didn't have school anymore. And now they had to take care of their home and school and all of those things. Our reopening will probably be similar to what you're hearing from others in terms of it's going to be like a rolling reopening. And it's all going to be around what we can resource, what we can staff. And, and I've already had, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure others have as well. I've already had conversations with families where they're like, why haven't you opened yet? My kid got his vaccine last week, you know, and, and, and they just don't understand the staggering trauma that our organizations really have endured through this process of, you know, what I will say, one thing that's really been amazing to me is the resilience. Probably more of the people that we support than the people that support them. I mean, I, I run into and talk to the, you know, to, to participants in our program and I am amazed at how great they have handled this and how great their attitudes are. It really has been, been, been something that's been a marvel to see. And I think, you know, the lessons, we're going to actually have a session this afternoon and it's all about what are the lessons that we've learned through this? That we take out of this? Because we're going to have to also advocate, you know, we, in, in a lot of ways, appendix K has, has saved our hides in some ways. Coming out of this, we've got to help decision makers understand what, what conceptually from that, that we've learned, can we take forward? Because if you can, you know, if you can connect just like we are right now in an effective way, that shouldn't go away. You know, when, when the pandemic goes away. But certainly, you know, the, the point that David touched on initially is I think what, what really has dragged on and has really been kind of the motivational drag on all the amazing things that people have done through this, because there's a lot of wonderful stuff to be celebrated, is that lack of face-to-face contact, that lack of human interaction that, you know, some businesses can go 100% remote. Our business is relationships and a lot of those relationships are hand-on relationship, hands-on relationships, and they can't be subbed out through Zoom. So coming out of this, how, I don't think any of us know, I'm waiting, I don't know if Kathleen or Doug or David, you've seen anything yet about, there's, there's $2 trillion that are about to be released into our economy. Something is going to come to us. We, we don't know at all what that is going to look like yet. I don't believe. And how that's going to help us either temporary or long-term. I will say, working in, in, in two states, that the way that Pennsylvania handled the, the CARES Act money to me was exemplary and was really a, should have been a national model. DDA has done some wonderful things and I think they deserve credit for some of the, some of the things that they've done. But, you know, Pennsylvania had their appendix K approved, I think on March 13th. And in May, we were still trying to figure out what DDA's was going to look like. So there have been some challenges there. But, you know, moving, moving forward while, you know, I think, I think while somewhat unfortunate, you know, I don't want to be, I don't want to be truly competing against my colleagues for team members. But I feel like it's almost like we're going to be forced into that. And it's really going to be interesting to see how we all navigate that, both individually as organizations and collectively as a, as a human service system. Because we can't bill for services that we don't provide. And we can't provide services if we don't have team members to provide the services. So probably for a lot, a lot like for, for Chimes and for, for, for the Baltimore ARC is our, our, when would we have ever thought that our residential programs would kind of save the day ever? They have through the pandemic because of the necessity of providing that, that 24-hour support and having support from, you know, from, from DDA and the feds to do that. But people are tired, you know, and we've got, it, it, it was interesting. I actually looked at it, looked at a sheet the other day of our, our earners through COVID. We got, we got a lot of six-figure DSPs. And it's because they have worked ridiculous amounts of overtime. Just absolutely ridiculous amounts of overtime. And, 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 and sometimes, you know, has that been good for them? It's, it's probably been good for their, their checkbook, probably not so great for their mental health. But quite honestly, if those opportunities aren't available at our organizations, a lot of our DSPs wouldn't work for us if they couldn't work overtime because they have to to survive. And, and we really do need to fix that in the long term. So I don't think there's anything really new that I'm sharing that hasn't already been, been, been shared. But I can, I can tell you, I, for, for, for me personally, it has been every day is, is a leadership challenge of how do we continue to move in a, in a mission focused way? While at the same time, running a, a cost-effective business, while at the same time figuring out where are we going from here? And, you know, now that the snowball feels like it's rolling a little bit downhill, the expectations of our constituents and their families are going to be unbelievably realist, unrealistic for us to be able to, to, you know, to just turn that switch on. And I mean, I don't know how many vacant positions you have, Kathleen. I've got well over 100 up here and it's, you know, it's the same old, it's the same old story, you know, if we're competing for, for wages in the $13 an hour range, we're, we're just not going to find people.
We're not going to find people.
So, so we're going to have to pay more. We're just going to have to. And we're going to have to figure out how do we do that, you know? And then it compresses all of our personnel throughout our entire organization. It's just going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be like, as, as much as we've talked about the DSP crisis, I don't know what, I don't know what language is stronger than crisis. But whatever it is, those are the words that we need to start figuring out how to use because it is, it is literally out of control right now in terms of our capacity, just even to get applicants, to get people in the door. There's no motivation right now to do that. So, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. I think maybe one more service provider, Russ Weber?
Thank you. And really I'm echoing a lot of the same things that are being heard. And I want to say misery enjoys company when it comes to these things. But Jay, I typed out my answers. If you want me to just send them to you, that would be easier for the minutes. Just let me know. I wanted to ask one quick question to Terry, if you think it would be helpful for this group. I, I got an email this morning about, let me just read it. It'd be easier to do that. It's, excuse me, hold on. From the FCC about helping out with finances for internet provide, internet and technology for low-income families. It's, it's called the emergency broadband benefit. Eligible households would get $50 per month towards broadband service and $100 off to purchase laptop or computers or tablets. It hasn't actually opened up yet, but it's kind of a notification that it's coming. If you want, I can send that out to you, Terry, and you can share with the group if you think it's helpful.
I've not heard of that. I think that would be helpful. Have you heard of that, Jay?
No, did you say FCC, Federal Communications Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, we, I'd love to see that and hear about it.
I'll send it. There, there are some other organizations that are getting actually grants for tablets. I mean, $100 is nice, but it doesn't buy you very much.
Right.
Maybe the, yeah, yeah, maybe the $50 broadband internet access will get you somewhere. But the $100 a tablet doesn't. I, I'm with another, involved with another organization and they've been able to get through, and I recall what organization. But they've been able to get, they've been able to get a lot of tablets. And they're going to rotate them around to the clientele. The other thing, I think since we've heard from a lot of service providers, maybe two other people that are here can maybe kind of chime in what's happening, parlay with Parks and Recs and, and Mike with regard to Community College of Baltimore County, where your programs are with respect to people you service.
Do you want me to say anything or do you just want me to email it?
Yeah, if, if you, you want to maybe give us a couple of hot points and then email the balance to, to Jay and we'll circulate it.
Right. I'll be brief just on the sake of time. What will the delivery services look like as things are eradicated? Really telehealth will be augmented some way, as others have said. Work from home and it really kind of depends on the staffing levels. I too am experiencing challenges with hiring and recruitment and burnout as well. But as my other peers have said here, the challenges are with less in-person services happening. There seems to be real breakdown in kind of team cohesion, you know, and then there's less communications. And I'm sure we all agree, we're all quite getting burned out with virtual meetings. So there's less incentive to do them as a generalization. I can say that need to have in-person services is needed for us as well because patients will call in at a very heightened state. And I can say that I'm very thankful with Governor Hogan's flexibility for telehealth, but also that he's allowed for businesses to do billable audio-only services. And just telephone, basically. We were doing that already because it just helps with continuity of care, but we get those random phone calls where a patient needs to talk to somebody. But we get those random phone calls where a patient needs to talk to somebody and it's been helpful. What lessons have we learned? Well, I'm glad to say we've all become viral and bacterial transmission experts. You know, we have certainly learned how to prevent much more than we were before. I can say a real concern for me is the continuity of care for the disabled children we serve is really kind of breaking down, especially with telehealth. Kids are being on computers all day for school. They, they don't want to get on a computer for services afterwards. And I, I don't blame them. And parents are really hesitant to be involved in that way as well. I have learned that flexibility telehealth is very helpful and that typically in the past state legislative has, legislation has been very hesitant to pass telehealth bills. There's a big one being reviewed right now. So it's really kind of opened their eyes to the viability of telehealth. Uh, are there upsides to the rise of remote working, virtual work? Yes and no. Um, financially, it's kind of a win-win for employee and employer. An employee saves on travel costs and has the benefit from working from home. And the employer saves them some additional operational costs. But as I kind of said, and everyone continues to say, that breakdown in communication is increasing. Long-term negative impacts, the number of services we are performing compared to 2019 is drastically decreased. Um, it's multifaceted, you know, staff burnout, staff retention, patient burnout. Uh, patients are getting increased symptoms with depression and anxiety. Less services are kind of creating to less revenue. Unfortunately, I'm trying to keep as many people employed as possible, but I can't say, I could say it won't last forever. Uh, our support housing and our sheltered employment programs with vocational training has really decreased as well. We have slowly started opening up small classes, but no more than 10 people at a time, when it used to be 80-plus. So we do a, a morning group of 10 and then we do an afternoon group of 10. And it's been helpful to combat the real depression that our, our patients are seeing. Uh, what outstanding goals need to be recognized and addressed? I can say I have no problem constantly letting people know my challenges. So I've been very much a nag, I can say to everyone that needs to hear about the challenges we face. So nothing really there. Thank you.
Can you share that information about the emergency broadband benefit? Do that. Thanks.
Yep, I'm going to email that. I have a note. Uh, do you want me to, you wanted to, Jay?
Yeah, please. Uh, just for a moment, um, I, I had a chat with Ben Dubin. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which you may or may not know, I mean, they fund part of my salary. All the grants that we do are community development block grant funds. So we learn about community development block grants, uh, backwards and forwards. And I know that, you know, HUD as an agency is high on expanding, uh, broadband internet access. Um, you know, it's in their policy language and so forth. Briefly, you know, one thought I had as we floated these questions out to the providers was long-term, you know, long-term, what can we do to assist, you know, individuals, uh, with making this connection? I think everybody who has spoken has mentioned that they have clients that don't have the wherewithal, you know, either the technology in hand or support to connect. We all want to get back to in-face interactions, but the whole idea of a hybrid, it just seems like, you know, I don't know the answer, but certain, a, a certain amount of remote activity is likely to live beyond COVID-19. And I think that this commission might be able to move the ball forward a little bit in that area.
He's here to stay. I'm mute.
Okay, Carla, are you still on with us?
Uh, yes, I am. I had to step away for a moment.
Okay.
Um, do you want just the TR office in general or recreation parks?
Yeah, well, recreation parks, what, you know, how you're operating, what you're doing with their, uh, disability community.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll speak first about, um, the TR office. Um, in the beginning, we, um, all the recreation parks in TR shut down, um, for a time period. Um, then we kind of ramped up and realized we could do some things virtual. So we kind of started our virtual programs in the summertime with summer camps. We had three summer camps that went virtual. Uh, that followed in the fall, our after-school program went virtual. Um, there was a time period we were allowed temporarily indoors, um, which we did have programs to do. But then we got shut down again and we ramped up the virtual stuff, which was a good thing. Um, it allowed our participants to stay in contact with their other friends that they had developed in the program. Um, it also provided an outlet for individuals who had not, had before, had not been able to participate in our programs. But now they were home, um, they could do something during the day so that with, when we get back to normal, maybe they not, may not be able to do our day, daytime programs, but they could do our evening and weekend programs. Some programs did not shut down, like our, our equine therapy programs still went on because that was deemed essential service and they were not required shut down. So they kind of went around year-round with that. Um, so for those individuals that participated in that program, um, they were very grateful. Uh, we did put some limitations on who we would take because of being in close quarters at some point, particularly the transferring people from wheelchairs to, to horses. Um, if somebody could not get on the horse by themselves, we basically did not service them. Um, because it was just too risky. So we ended up doing really a lot of individuals on the spectrum and those individuals with developmental disabilities. Unfortunately, the physical disabilities people were left out of the loop on that. And we're hoping that we'll be able to, uh, change that shortly and, uh, welcome those, um, individuals back into the programs. Um, some of the lessons learned, um, the virtual programs opened up a lot for some people. For others, it was not in their wheelhouse. Um, they just didn't, could not get to it or didn't have the technology. Or they had the lack of support, um, from either their service providers or their house staff or whatever. Um, we had a couple of times where we had like three gentlemen all hung around somebody's cell phone trying to participate. Um, so it, it was kind of hard for, for them. Um, so we're all actually hoping to get back. Um, in terms of the department in general, we're kind of, interesting, it was a time period where I think we had a brand-new director for all three weeks and then COVID hit. So we were getting reached to a new director and then everything shut down or pivoting to do other things. Um, it proved that we were very versatile and we were very adaptable, our staff. We were then, we were farmed out to help, um, people apply for SNAP benefits. We helped with elections. Um, we're still helping with the, with the vaccination sites, um, all around the county. Um, I'm still doing that. I've done the, um, registration at the fairgrounds a couple of times and, and the ADA. And I do would like to throw a little thing in about the ADA, um, section. Um, you guys mentioned where you, um, recommended the whiteboards. And when I was doing the registration for the whiteboard for the, uh, ADA section, I found the whiteboard, but there was no dry eraser marker. So I went up to the person who was running the ADA section. I said, where's the dry eraser marker? And she looked at me like I had three eyes and green hair. And she's like, what are you talking about? I said, well, the whiteboard, I, you know, I need a dry eraser marker. And she's like, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I had to show her the whiteboard to say that we did have it. And she's like, what would you need that for? And so I had explained to her, people with communication disorders, you know, issues might need to have that as a form of communication. Oh, was the response I got. I said, well, could you look for a dry eraser marker? And, um, she never did come back with one. So now when I go to do registration, just in case I get assigned the ADA, I take my own little dry erase marker with me. Because I was there the other day. I was just there Monday. There was no, actually, I didn't have the board. Nobody had the board, but I had the pen. So we, we kind of kept in communication with each other. Luckily, we didn't need it, but that kind of gives you an idea that there's still some, some, uh, learning that needs to be going on with the, uh, at least with the Timonium Fairgrounds vaccine site. But they have, they are much more organized with the, with, uh, the wheelchairs and the lanes and everything, make it easier. Now pivoting back to, um, recreation parks, we, I said, we're much more adaptable. Um, we've helped on a lot of stuff. We've given away, I think, over a million meals, um, through our PAL centers, where people can come up and, and get their free lunches and, and breakfasts and, and meal kits, particularly in the weekends. Um, and we are still doing that. We're starting to phase that out a little bit. I'm going to end. Um, if, right now, it looks like probably it was going to taper down in May and June to only a few sites. Um, I guess another good thing for our department and the whole midst of this thing, we argued for our social media presence. And we were able to get Twitter and Facebook accounts, which before our department had been denied that. So that's actually kind of exciting. Um, through this pandemic, we saw a 200% increase in our use of our parks. So it basically proves that recreation parks is indeed a vital service to people to get out, you know, mentally and physically. Um, our parks, particularly, I, guys ever want to venture out to Cromwell Valley Park on a weekend? I would say good luck finding a place to park. Same thing with Honeygill Regional Park. Uh, they're probably two most popular parks that we had, um, through this whole pandemic. The other thing I think has happened is also as well, we've done more county-wide special events than we've ever done in the past that were free to public and they were drive-throughs, something we have never ever done before. So we had a Halloween booth through, we had a mitten tree drive-through and we're going to have a hop-along drive-through, um, at the end of the month. So it's actually kind of put us in a, doing different things that we've never done before and looking to do things differently. They think overall is probably a good thing for recreation.
Thank you, Carla. My.
You're welcome.
Okay, a very, um, so I oversee two programs at CCBC. Uh, the first one, Access, um, it basically was providing 120 classes per trimester to about two dozen DDA-certified and other agencies, including places like Mosaic and Spring Grove, um, as well as several people that are on the call. And, um, so I, yeah, that all went, that all went, just like with your, with all your day programming went, um, the right, right away, I'm back to, I think I'm running right now eight classes for four agencies. So little by little, some of my agencies are coming back online. Um, and at least in some, in a reduced program capacity, but I have a feeling that it's never going to be quite what it was. Just, uh, in particular, it's been helpful hearing from the staffing standpoint and the other financial issues. I knew some of it from discussions with folks, but, um, that is helpful for me to go back to my people from a budget standpoint to say why business is going to look a whole lot different than it did before. But finding ways to be creative creatively, um, I, I will say that we've, I've been able to throughout this, um, or throughout the last several months to create more flexible options for clients as far as the programming goes, um, and be more creative with that. Um, within the, within the, within the virtual environment. And, um, Spring Grove has, we've had four conversations over the last six months about restarting and then something happens and boom, it goes down again. Um, with that, because that's all, because that facility is completely residential now. But, um, so Access, um, we'll, we'll see what happens in the future, but I, I am reaching, slowly reaching out to, um, agencies and folks. For example, Kathleen, I'm, I've got a, a phone call set up or a Zoom, Zoom meeting set up with Kath, with, um, Joanna, um, for next, for next week to talk about, um, to talk about what we can do for programs with you all. And I know that, that, um, David, we're already doing some stuff with you. Um, and I'm, yeah, little by little, trying to rebuild that. Um, on the flip side, I've been extremely busy on our single side, single step side of the equation. Um, we were running, uh, probably 16 classes on campus in Catons, between Catonsville and Dundalk. Mainly English, math and, um, and then a whole bunch of electives and then, um, some career training programs. In particular, pause our professional animal workers and our, you know, childcare. Um, we, within, within two weeks, we had pivoted completely online and with all of that. And I, every semester I do, uh, we do end-of-semester meetings with our students and their families. Um, and take a half hour with each, with each of them over the course of a week between me and, and, because we typically have between 70 and 80 students that were, that were serving in single step in any one semester. And, um, the feedback that we got as far as, um, what we were able to do was, was really nice to hear. My instructors, some of them struggled with technology issues and some of them still do. It's like, don't sit in front with your back to a, to a window on a bright day, please. Because nobody, especially if you're fairly dark-complected, can't see you at all. Yeah. So it's things, little things like that that we've had to work through. Um, and we've continued the, the, the online classes. Um, we do a short, um, four-week semester, um, summer program in July. I'm still planning to keep that virtual. But the goal, um, and what we've directed from the president of the college is as much as we can get up to 100% on-campus regular classes as possible to do so. So the single-step classes, I'm really looking at, at being able to, um, have offer, at least at Catonsville and Dundalk, offer the parallel English and math classes and the electives on campus. The one thing that I've found through all of this is I will continue to keep an internet or a virtual option going throughout. Because interestingly enough, yes, in those end-of-semester meetings, um, several of my students flourished in this environment. Especially those with anxiety, that, that had, um, things like, um, on the spectrum with anxiety disorders and those with ADHD. Because the amount of in-class, in-classroom distractions was minimized having to focus on a screen. Now, I had others that, especially that are my extremely social people. I had, only had three students who dropped out of the program until we go back to face-to-face classes. And two of those were, it was the social component. They just didn't want to deal with it, no matter what we tried to do with them. Um, with that, and then, and then one of them was an anxiety issue, um, with, in the home. But in any case, um, I'm always going to be offering going forward and an online version of our classes and, and see how that does. The interesting thing is with the career, we were able to continue the childcare and, um, which is two semesters and our professional animal workers, um, career training programs through single step. Um, we've put off the internships because they all come coupled with at least one semester's worth of internships. The internships are going to probably happen earliest this summer with those. In fact, I've got it, I've got it aborted, um, Office Skills internship. They'd just gotten into the, to the, finished the first week of internship last spring when we had to go dark. And they were all internships with departments on campus. I had somebody in dental hygiene, somebody in criminal justice, somebody in the registrar's office. But I'm hoping that by summer I can bring those students back, finish the, finish them up. Interestingly enough, our professional animal workers cohort this spring has a student from Alberta, Canada, who found our program online. So, and he's doing great. Um, so we are going to find him a local, we're going to work with them to find a local site. So he doesn't have to travel here, that he can do his work coordinate and could do his internship piece for that in Alberta. And we've, and we've had discussions with transition coordinators in other counties in Maryland since other than, um, Montgomery, there's really nobody else that does this kind of programming to the level that we do. And nobody else is doing our career training programs. So we're like, so I'm looking at finding ways to be able to continue and expand, especially the career training programs. Um, because between warehouse technician, child, well, actually that one's going to be hard, but the childcare, um, and the professional animal workers, even the office skills. If we can find a meaningful internship location, I can run those programs. I also do quite a bit of business with the WTC. That all shut down immediately, um, last spring because almost, most of our students were, they're dormitory students with doors. Um, and the days, the dormitories, they still haven't brought them online, but little by little, for example, we're going to start a warehouse technician training, um, first weekend, week in April for the first time in a year. But what I did is I offered for the, the classroom experience to be on one of our campuses because our campuses are open for business. It's just we, we have, you know, limitations as far as, um, the, how we can populate the rooms, um, et cetera. But, uh, but we are, so, so we're going to do the classroom piece at Essex and then restore, which is our locate, our internship location is fine with having the students there, you know, five days a week in the mornings. and then restore, which is our locate, our internship location is fine with having the students there, you know, five days a week in the mornings. So we're, we're rebooting that one. Um, the Sephora program up at the Withers, warehouse up in Hartford County has been running fine since that's offsite and everything happens at that, at the, at that warehouse location. Um, but everything else that we've done, the CBS, um, retail sales, the Starbucks, um, barista training, the childcare, the Paws, um, that we've, that we've done at the WTC are all on hold for the time being. Uh, they're little by little, the WTC is introducing more staff back and they were actually starting some of their, um, in-house programming back. So their, um, their janitorial facilities maintenance program has a small cohort of local students. And they're, they're looking and, um, they're looking to do that with a couple of their other programs. They're just, they can't, they're, they're hamstrung as far as taking out of county students or consumers until the dormitories reopen. And they've sort of, they're, they're sort of last in the pecking order with AMHAC. My Maryland Higher Education Commission is so concerned about, you know, the, the, the school systems that trying to, they're vying for attention to trying to be, be able to, um, pull the programming back in with that. Um, uh, there was something that go, oh, so with that, the other thing, the other, uh, thing that I'm, I'm gonna be reaching out to aid my DDA agencies with is as far as our campuses are open for businesses, if you can get your consumers or your clients to our campuses. Um, and we, and I think that we can probably take at least eight to 10 students in a room and be able to do, um, on-campus programming as well, which we had done. We'd been doing that some. It was nicer when they could take it up to 20 students in a, in a room. Um, but, uh, yeah, all six of our locations are, are available for that as well. But yeah, it's been a learning experience and, and it's, it's been one that, yeah, or definitely opened my eyes. I would have fought, I fought tooth and nail anything virtual for the longest time, figuring our clients, our students can't handle that. It's not, they want them socializing in a classroom with other people. They want them out of the house, et cetera. And then so I said, it's not something that would ever be feasible. And my eyes were completely open to the fact that it is feasible. Like I said, and our business model is changing because of it. Sorry, I know that was a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Ben and Terry, I just wanna-
One thing.
Okay, this is Mary from Baltimore County Government. So I just wanna add that our career centers, two of the three are open, our Hunt Valley and our Liberty Career Centers are open, um, Monday through Thursday. And we have screenings that staff will go through, CCBC leases those, um, offices. But we do have career center staff that are there to service the adult workforce. Um, we are in recovery mode, so the director of my department, of our department is chairing a sub-cabinet for the county executive, working on a recovery plan. Um, we are currently planning for our summer youth employment program in which Michael's, uh, program is gonna be providing the job readiness. We have received over 1,600 applications. That is nowhere near the number of youth we're gonna be able to serve. We don't have that kind of funding. We do get funding through Doors, DJS, DSS and the state to serve, um, young adults and youth with disabilities and barriers to employment. Um, we have, I did secure some grants from some foundations that will be able to serve a few more, but not, not 1,600 youth. Um, but we are gonna be using a virtual platform and an in-person platform. So last year we ran the program and served around 300 youth and we did have youth that were reporting onsite even last summer. Um, we're gonna kick off with two trainings, one on May 27th and one on April 10th, in which the county executive and the county administrative officer is gonna kick it off. And then we have Dr. Branch doing a COVID training for the youth. So they'll understand and be kind of more about COVID, wearing the masks. Um, we also have been having youth, we have about 80 youth that are on Baltimore County Government payroll working on the Saturdays at the food distribution sites. Uh, so we've continued to try and keep youth employed post our summer youth employment program last year. Um, and those youth that'll be working, they'll work through the end of June. We have, um, they're gonna be reducing sites in April, but we're gonna try and reallocate youth so that they can keep working. So we're really focused on trying to, you know, keep the youth employed, um, and educating them on COVID. So I just wanted to announce the programs that Baltimore County Economic and Workforce Development are doing. So, um, and then the last thing is I was in a meeting yesterday with Jade Gingrich and Scott Dennis from Doors. They are going through, they are applying for a federal grant and the three areas in the state that they wanna partner with are Baltimore County, Western Maryland and the Upper Shore. This is basically to help young adults ages 16 to 30 who were beneficiaries of SSI, um, or at risk of disengagement from school, getting, um, training and going back to work. So I've been working with them on that project. So I just wanted to let you know, career centers are open. We are open for business. We're helping people go back to work. So if you have questions, please email me.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, I mean, kudos go out to all the, the agencies that we've heard from today. Michael, I, I thought you only ran the single step. I learned a lot about what CCBC is doing uh, in our community and I think we, we need to hear more from, uh, from you in the future. And I just jotted a few things down, you know, what are some of our challenges? Definitely the wages. What we can do is a commission to work with our state legislators to, to increase the wages. Uh, I mean, the creativity that, that your organizations have done are just amazing. How creative you've been able to, uh, to be, um, you know, this competitiveness now that you're gonna go through on this recovery for employees is gonna be really a, a big challenge for you. Uh, the telehealth, you know, it's something of the future and we, we need to really continue to push that and make sure that third-party people, uh, uh, you can build it to a lot of, lot of the third parties uh, for the services, uh, you're providing. Uh, you know, can we make access for the internet and, and hardware more accessible to low-income individuals and people with disabilities? What we can do for that, what we can do perhaps to meet with some of our county council and pose some of these issues, uh, to them. Um, so you've all thought out of the box. You've done an outstanding, a terrific job and we really need to, to let the community know more of what, you know, what the agencies, uh, are doing in our community to serve people with disabilities. So thank you all. Um, do we, I, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do you?
Let me piggyback on that also and say the, the collaboration has been wonderful. Um, and different ways to communicate, lessons learned, um, the virtual options I think are here to stay and I think hybrids here to stay. And again, kudos to all the provider agencies. Thank you so much. Do we have anything else on the agenda, like legislation?
Terry, I have just a couple of questions to some of the presenters.
Sure.
This is Julie Gaynor, and I know it says owner and I can't switch it during the meeting, but have, has there been much publicity? Um, I've not heard it on the news waves about the crisis that you're, you're currently in or going to be in with hiring, um, workers and wondering if that's something that needs to be ramped up if it's not been done. And the other part of it is, I know with all that we're hearing with COVID and looking at immune systems and everything else from the nutritional end, how much is being done to provide information to providers and to, you know, senior citizens and things like that on how to have better nutrition to enable the body to be better able to fight COVID or whatever else may come down the pipe. Because I know that's been a problem, um, you know, for a lot of people over a long period of time with all the poor mobility health issues. So we talk about the physical end of things, but I'm hoping that the nutritional end is also being addressed.
They won't address that.
Yeah, I, I think for the nutritional issue, uh, that, that's been, I think, well addressed by the county, the community. I know, uh, Delegate Lisa, uh, Del Castro has been very active in her district, the 11th District, uh, mobilizing, uh, meal distributions and food distributions. Carla indicated in a number of meals that, that they've distributed, uh, in the past. So I think, um, you know, I, I'm sure there are people that are still underserved, uh, by this, uh, the, the food issue and the nurse nutritional part. But I think we, we really have gotten out there as a community and, and provided that.
No, I'm not talking so much about meals being provided as education being provided for people to make good, healthy choices moving forward to improve their own immunity. And well, I'm just saying, in all the online things that are being offered, I would like to think and hope that some of those issues are being addressed. Um, and that, you know, just moving forward, that I think that's something we need to be looking at because of diabetes and obesity and asthma and all those other things that are out there, all the autoimmune diseases that are out there to educating people more, because I think that we've been so focused on the medical end of trying to prevent COVID and we're not looking at some of those underlying things that will help make people better able to fight things, whether it's COVID or whether it's the flu or whether it's whatever else that comes along. So I would like to think that we're adding some instructional components into nutritional education. That's all.
Point well taken.
You know, I think whether we can, uh, Jay, if you can, uh, express this to Department of Health and, and see, you know, what kind of response, um, you know, they can give to us on that. And maybe at a future meeting, have somebody from Department of Health tell us what they're doing for PSAs and along that, that line. Um, Terry, anything else on the agenda? Cause I don't have it in front of me. Is that, have we done the whole agenda, Jay?
Jay. We're, we're pretty much done. I was, I, I'd like to stay on briefly with, uh, with you and Terry and then maybe we could just kinda make a call to the commission about the minutes. I know the minutes are boring compared to everything else that we were talking about today. Um, and, and thanks to all the providers that provided so much insight, um, and education to us. I do salute all of you. I thought this turned out very nicely.
Baltimore County, Baltimore County is in pretty good shape. We're learning from each other and I'm really proud to be a part of this. Thank you all.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't usually brag about, uh, anything, but my daughter just got a, a new job. She, she's working in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion in the U.S. House of Representatives. Uh, for those that don't know my daughter, she's profoundly deaf, uh, which you wouldn't know it if you met her. Uh, because she, she doesn't stop talking. She's been oral her whole, she's, she's been oral her whole life. And, uh, she goes from one end to the other end and tells me everything that happened in between. Uh, so she's really excited. She started this job last week after being in the defense industry for 20 years. She finally got her what she thinks is her dream job and hopefully her dream job.
Thanks to everybody's input.
So, uh, Ben and Terry.
Thank you.
The, the minutes were put out. Can we say, uh, let's have, uh, five working days of, uh, opportunity for edits and then we'll call them accepted?
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ben and I'll stay on.
Okay.
Happy-
All right, bye all. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick's.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you all. People are disappearing.
Has left the meeting.
Angela Manning.
Has left the meeting.
Mary's a holdout.
So, um, really, uh, well, I thought that went very nicely.
Yes.
Like seriously, I, I did not know what Michael Tan, what all CCBC does.
Yes. That was wonderful to hear all that. Yeah. And the coordination he does with the other service providers, that's-
Right. I, I had no idea that he was working with those other service providers.
Mm-hmm. Well, he hasn't been able to attend a lot of the meetings this past year, but believe what he does and what he shares with us is so important. That's great. The only person we didn't hear from, I think, was Brian Trees.
No. Oh, oh.
Yeah, Brian was on the meeting. He didn't have his camera on.
Right. That's okay.
Well, I think that, um, I, I think that, uh, I don't know, would you like me to just put out a, a quick email, say, you know, for the next five working days, uh, please comment on the minutes and, and then they will be approved. I can do that.
And, and if they attended, right? Cause some, like today, Ramel and Angie were in and out a couple of times. Yeah.
I did hear from, from them, um, and I appreciate hearing from them very much. And I, um, I have to go back to my notes, but I believe both of them, they kind of explained challenges that they've had attending in this environment. Um, I guess Ramel is the one that has, you know, it conflicts with her job duties. She's traveling. And, um, so as I mentioned to Terry on the phone when we talked, um, I, I'm gonna put out a, you know, a note to you guys to look for a meeting date next week where we can talk about appointments and just, you know, talk about kind of the case by case on individuals. Um, you know, and get back into that. Uh, I'm gonna be, um, Ben's gonna be joining me tomorrow at three. For another cool and nifty dandy virtual meeting. And, um, we're gonna be scoring grant applications. And then, um, you know, that'll, that'll be a, a threshold for me. Certainly there's more to do, but it, it kinda, you know, closes the public interaction and just getting the scores on the grants. And, um, so we'll, we'll come back to things and, um, I look forward to brainstorming a little bit on the meetings. You know, we've had three good meetings, I think. Um, and, you know, look forward to, um, April and May, which would give us five meetings. Um, and then we could kinda chill out if we want. Um, and do the ceremony and look to have a meeting in November and December and we meet our obligations to the charter.
Right. So you say maybe have another, another virtual award ceremony?
I, I guess my gut is leaning that way. I think that so much in the world is changing at such a fast pace with vaccinations at the same time. I don't, I just don't know if psychologically, I don't know if I'm ready to walk into a room of 100 people.
No, I'm not.
Even after my shots, I'm not. Right. So the, we paid Brian through the money at the league?
It was, uh, it was, it was, it was, quote unquote, leftover money. And we had 2,000. Um, we probably have maybe, I don't know, maybe we have 1,500. Um, and I'm really guessing, I don't know whether we want to consider resourcing that. I mean, you know, we could probably get through another year of doing a video presentation without having to move heaven and earth with regard to funds.
Right.
I, I think we know how to do it. Um,
And funds for that would not be a priority.
Say again?
Funds for that would not be a priority.
Well, in what context do you say that, Terry?
I would hope they would be. Well, funding is going to food and the resources for different agencies. If we can get funding for that, that's fabulous.
I mean, if the county, if the county would fund part of, you know, a, a video.
I can, I can explore that. I think, you know, we didn't use county funds last time. Um, there's certain occasions, there's certain occasions where using county funds can be, you know, not a big deal. Or there's certain occasions where they just don't really wanna have the conversation at all. So I, I don't know, I don't know where I'm at, but you know, either one of those two things could happen. Um, so, and sometimes it's about timing and sometimes, you know, this whole conversation we had, uh, the whole thing about, you know, a communication breakdown, living in the virtual world. You know, how many times can you have a chat with somebody and, you know, in person, you know, chat versus sending an email? Those things make a big difference. I, I mean, you know, things you hear from your supervisor in the office, you know, they read differently in the office than they do in an email. I I mean, you know, things you hear from your supervisor in the office, you know, they read differently in the office than they do in an email. Body language or eye contact and all that stuff has been vaporized. I mean, you know, I mean, it's just like hello. And so we we have time to figure it out and I think that Brian did a great job. You know, the county has a videographer, they could probably, you know, they might be able to fill in that, you know, that might not be what we want to do. I don't know whether, I mean, you know, I'm just going to tell you, it's, things are going to happen easier, more efficient if we stay away from public funds.
Right, right, right. But we, we. Go ahead.
If there's a way that, you know, that the nonprofits can contribute as they used to. For, you know, for the luncheon or a portion thereof. I mean, I, you know, honestly, we we heard a lot that, you know, we heard a lot from the nonprofits today about, you know, the the challenges. I mean, you know, being down, having a hundred vacant positions.
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty strapped for funding right now.
Yeah.
Well, that would not be a priority.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would, I would explore, you know, with the county, maybe first with their. Public relations and whether they would make a video for us. I think to to pass it up the line to to Colleen and 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 see where we can go with that.
Yes, last year's was really pretty successful, you and Brian did a great job, Jay, I mean. And and the county executive was participating and that was a great PR for us. And it was downsized, which was really good. Do it again, I think.
I do too, I mean, I think we can, I think we can find a way, honestly. We have a little bit left in the bank and it's it's not, it's just not. It has, it should be manageable and even if it's, you know, I don't know, even if it's twenty five hundred dollars. You never heard me say this, but you know, I don't know what this stimulus is going to do, okay? I mean, I really don't. But, you know, government could get a chunk of it. I I saw a headline that said the Republican attorneys general are questioning a part of the stimulus package. And low and behold, the part that they're questioning is the three hundred fifty billion dollars for state and local government. Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether the Republican attorneys general can really do anything about it. I mean, it could be that that ship has sailed and, you know, they can make noise, but.
Just just don't take the money, there's more for other states.
Yep. Didn't one state say they weren't going to take?
Well, they, they, a stupid legislator down in Florida told DeSantis not to take the money. I think it was, it was a senator or or somebody in the House of Representatives from Florida. So, yeah. For next week, I'm available like Wednesday, early afternoon and and Friday, early afternoon, not Friday, Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Had either of you heard about the emergency broadcast broadcast broadband benefit that Greg mentioned?
No, didn't you say it was like a hundred dollars for something, what do you get with a hundred dollars?
You you can't buy anything for a hundred dollars a tablet.
But maybe that could be supplemented with what is available in their household, that that could be a benefit to people. So let's get that information from him out there.
Yeah.
Good meeting, I think, I think we're doing pretty good in Baltimore County, I mean, I'm on this. It's interesting, if anybody wants to join in tonight, you probably shouldn't, Jay, but the Maryland District Law Center, you saw the. Unfortunately, the articles in the paper about suing and actually the counties that were being concerned about pretty much came around, except for one. But.
And Baltimore County was never mentioned in their original lawsuit.
And you know what, I think Terry Sapp did such a wonderful job listening.